Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Waukegan City Council meeting for Monday, December 6, 2010. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman Needham. Alderman Larson.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Figueroa.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
President, the count for we have a quorum. I understand Pat's not feeling well tonight. Our best wishes go out to him to recover from the flu or whatever he has. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll have a few comments I'd like to make, a couple of things I'd like to read to you to kind of kick off here. First of all, I'd like to read something from the late, one of the later issues of American City and County. It's a magazine which I receive each month, and Greg, I think this will be of particular interest to you. It's headlined "Chicago Cracks Down on Chronic Crime." It's no longer cool to own a crack house in Chicago. On October 6, the city council approved a new ordinance that would hold property owners more accountable when their buildings require more than the usual level of police and emergency service in response to chronic illegal activity. A property with chronic illegal activity is defined by the ordinance as one that experiences three or more calls for police service on three different days within any 90-day period in which the police investigate illegal activity on the premises or take enforcement action against any tenant or person associated with the premises for illegal activity occurring with one block, occurring within one block or 1,000 feet of the property. The ordinance establishes penalties from $500 to $1,000 for each offense once a building has been declared a public nuisance, and penalties of $200 to $500 for any other violation of the ordinance. In addition, the property owner will be liable to the city for all calls incurred as a result of responding to the calls for service. Now, we've had discussions up here and among ourselves going on for months now about looking at an ordinance such as this. I think that I will ask Corporation Council to obtain a copy of the ordinance from Chicago, to strip out of that ordinance those items that he feels are appropriate for the city of Waukegan, and begin to craft an ordinance very much in the fashion of what I read about. And hopefully, within the next couple of months, be able to bring that to the city council for overall vote. So I think that we're kind of moving along the steps that we've been hoping to be able to target some of these properties, and I will say that what I read focuses primarily on police activity. The city of Waukegan's ordinance will not just focus on police activity, it will also focus on code enforcement and other types of violations. And properties that are chronic will be targeted as they are in Chicago. Obviously, it depends on coming out of the committee. This would be going through the judiciary committee, and whatever they decide would be appropriate in the way of fines and penalties would be what we would apply. But I think it's a good start, and it's something that, you know, I'm glad Chicago did it because we're now able to do a lot, be able to take a lot of the work that they did and hopefully adopt it to the city of Waukegan. Now, under Mayor's comments, I want to thank our friends at Main Street for all of the planning and hard work that went into our Holiday Festival downtown on this prior weekend. Many of the downtown stores decorated their windows, and as part of a competition overseen by Main Street, Ray's Grocery Store was selected as the best display. The prize was unusual in that the business license for 2011 for Ray's will be paid for by Main Street. Of course, we wish to thank Midwest Generation for providing the funding to make such a unique prize possible. I also want to thank Alderman Sam Cunningham for volunteering to join with me in reading to the young children that attended. Last but not least, thanks go to Dave Motley and to Tom Haggerty for all of their hard work in making sure the city provided the support necessary to make the event possible and for procuring, placing, and decorating the city's new permanent Christmas tree over at Benny Plaza. If you haven't had a chance to go see it, following this meeting, it might be, it might be worthwhile going over there. Tom, is it lit this evening?
Yes.
Good. So you get a chance to see what it looks like. I think everybody did a real nice job. If everyone could do me a favor and check their cell phones to make sure that they are turned off to either silent or just turned off in general, I would appreciate it. I'm doing that to mine right now, so we make sure that the meeting is not interrupted as we progress. Second, the Waukegan Library unveiled its newest year-long exhibit designed to focus on the educational and creative stimulation of our young people entitled "Under the Sea." I attended the grand opening on Sunday, and it was packed with families and their children eager to experience this wonderful exhibit. Thanks should go out to our friends at North Shore Gas for the sponsorship support they provided which made this exhibit possible. Three, I want to announce that we are going to begin the process of creating a new group that will be charged with overseeing the implementation of the master plan in our downtown and lakefront areas. I am setting a six-month timeframe for creating the legal framework, appointing the members, and providing the empowerment necessary to this group so that we can begin to see measurable strides being made towards that redevelopment project in our downtown and lakefront. Many communities that have successfully tackled such complex and wide-ranging redevelopment initiatives have taken this very same approach. It will be a separate legal entity that will assess the current state of the master plan, finalize all agreements necessary with lakefront stakeholders, work to attract the capital necessary to fund the proposed developments, and then serve until the project is deemed completed. This will not be a branch of Waukegan government. Even though they are chartered by the city, they will work as a separate entity, and the city will provide the required oversight and support as needed, but will by and large step aside in order to allow this body to function at maximum efficiency with a minimum of government intrusion. Those of us that were able to attend the review of the master plan several weeks ago will remember the discussion that took place at that meeting, and the words that were spoken by the gentleman there that were very clear about the fact that the city of Waukegan should have been well along in this redevelopment process. And he said that it really is about time that you, that you adopt a new approach to this, and I brought up the idea of creating a redevelopment authority, a redevelopment commission, whatever the name ends up being, and there seemed, seemed to be concurrence on that, and it does seem to be a good way to get started, which is to allow the professionals to run a project as big as this, which could approach not only tens of millions, but maybe potentially several hundred million dollars, in getting our lakefront and downtown redeveloped. So it's something that we will all be working together to put together, but hopefully, everybody will understand that it is the private sector that does this type of work best, and it is in the best interest of, of this city government to be able to step aside and allow them to move this project forward. I would like to read something from the latest issue of Cranes. It just came out this week. Bear with me, it's a little bit lengthy, but I think it's important that everybody hears this. It's titled "Wanted: Skilled Labor," subtitle "Precision Manufacturers Can't Fill Some Key Jobs." For the last 18 months, Michael Alpers, president of Swiss Precision Machining Incorporated, has struggled to find employees to operate the computer-controlled metalworking machines that dominate the company's 33,000-square-foot manufacturing plant in Niles. Despite attending a slew of job fairs and working with employment agencies and industry associations, three machinist positions with salaries ranging from $12.50 to $30 an hour remain unfilled. "The way the economy is now, you'd expect lines around the block," said Mr. Alpers, whose company makes high-precision components for the medical, dental, and fiber optics industries, "but we are not getting a tidal wave of applicants." Manufacturers like Swiss Precision are finding that despite record unemployment rates, the longstanding shortfall of skilled machinists remains. Industry experts point to the school system, which they say does not turn out enough people with the technical skills that manufacturers require. The schools, in their view, also do an inadequate job of promoting manufacturing as a career path. "We want to grow," said Mr. Alpers. "We have the ability to buy different equipment and to go into different markets, but we can't find enough people to train. There's no sense in buying the equipment if you can't get people to operate it." Reversing the decline in skilled trades workers is seen by many economists as a key to reducing unemployment and maintaining a competitive, competitive edge in a global economy. A 2008 study by the Center for Labor and Community Research, a Chicago-based, nonprofit manufacturing research organization, found that 1,800 new and replacement machining workers are needed each year in the Chicago area, but existing training programs can meet only one-third of the demand, the report says. "The problem is quite real and quite deep," says Dan Swinney, executive director of the Chicago Manufacturing Renaissance Council, a Chicago coalition formed five years ago to promote the economic viability of modern manufacturing. "It will become a crisis in the next five or 10 years unless there is a turnaround in our education system." Mr. Swinney says change is underway. He cites local successes like the Austin Polytechnic Academy in Chicago, a career high school dedicated to high-skilled manufacturing, which will graduate its first class in June. In addition, Wheeling High School in Wheeling and Chicago's Richard J. Daley and Wilbur Wright Colleges are leaders in manufacturing training and education. At least two schools, Austin Polytech and Daley College, are pursuing National Institute for Machining Skills accreditation. Yet, Mr. Swinney says, these few examples are not enough to fill the manufacturing labor gap. These are demonstration projects, he says. They can only make a difference if they go to scale. We need five or six schools like Austin Polytech. They are also reaching out to schools, including Northern Illinois University and DeKalb, and they want to develop partnerships with private and government-sponsored laboratories to make sure they are working and developing the skills necessary for our kind of industry. This will help position our company, or our community, I should say as well, to be on the front end of leading technology, and we can be a place where graduates and technical workers can pursue internships and even full-time jobs. Now, the reading, the reason I'm reading this article is does, it does a great job of explaining why we're moving forward with the Waukegan Industrial Council. Due to a busy summer and fall, we have not been pushing the formation of this group as aggressively as I would have liked. This will be an advisory group that will not be a legal part of city government, but will function in strictly an advisory capacity as we try to reinvent our workforce in order to accomplish two things. First, train residents in skills that will make them more attractive to regional employers. Second, to create a workforce that is more attractive to companies seeking to locate in the region, hopefully, to bring them into the city of Waukegan. I have already spoken with several local corporations about being involved, and I've found a real willingness among them to take part. Secondly, I have approached regional educators, College of Lake County, Robert Morris University, Rosalind Franklin University, and our own District 60 about joining, and they have all agreed to provide representatives to this effort. I am shooting for a final makeup of this group by the end of March, and will provide a public announcement at that time as to the names of the participants coming from the business and educational sectors. Stay tuned for further developments. Next, we have audience time. First up, and I will remind audience members that are wishing to speak, that we do limit your comments to three minutes. First up would be Mr. Jose Guzman. Mr. Guzman, I believe you're, you're showing your address as 40 Washington Park in Waukegan. Is that correct? Yes, Mr. Guzman?
Thank you. My name is Jose Guzman. I come here to complain about raising taxes, property taxes. I think we got a very high rate already in the property taxes, and we cannot afford to pay any more taxes in Waukegan. And if the city of Waukegan, they show the money, they should make it, find a different way where they can make a cut. Either people making too much money, city workers? It's another thing, I've been having some complaints, but some people been saying, they've been seeing city cars driving in the grocery stores, jewels, different grocery stores during Sunday and Saturdays. Somebody abused that. They should never, nobody should use a city car in the weekend. When I go to work, I take, I drive my car. I pay for my gasoline. Everybody should do that. That's abuse, and that's, I don't willing to pay no more taxes in Waukegan. If they raise the taxes in Waukegan, get ready for more protest, big ones, boycotts. Well, we gotta do what we gotta do, but we cannot accept no more taxes in Waukegan. Property taxes is way too high. If they have a problem with the schools, find out those principals, those big shots over there making way too much money, $100,000, $200,000, it's too much. Lot of our people making $10,000 a year, $15,000 a year, $20,000 a year, and keeping raising the taxes. It hurting us. We cannot keep going that way. We gotta find a different solution. We gotta find a better way to do things in Waukegan. We cannot pay no more property taxes in Waukegan. And it's another thing I want to say about those $500 fine they have for those people for they take the cars away. They take the cars away and charging $500 to $1,000. That's stealing the money from those people, because those people don't have driver licenses because they don't want to give it to them. That's not their fault. The federal government know they're illegal here. All the government know those people, they're good working people. They're in the top of your roof, changing the roof. They work all over. They pay taxes. They never claim for the social security. They never claim for the unemployment. What else you want? You still robbing them, taking the money away from them? No. They should go back to the old time. Anybody got cut with no driver license, all they gotta do, park the car in there, let them come and pick up the car with somebody else have a driver license and prove they have insurance, let them go. Let the judge to decide what to do with the person. Don't go and take the money away from that person.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you. Next, we have, oh, I'm sorry, Margaret Karosko. Margaret, you'll have to give your address if you're, when you come up to speak, please.
Margaret Karosko, 532 North Lewis Avenue. I'm here this evening not only to speak for myself, but on behalf of many residents, Waukegan residents, and organizations, including those present today from the Chapala Group, taking upon ourselves to attend each and every meeting, so we are up to date as the, any developments in regards to three different items. First of all, at the last meeting in regards to the proposed changes to the towing ordinance, several Aldermen had requested additional information, and if we're interested as to what specifically is information that is being requested, that's being taken in consideration, perhaps maybe holding back a decision to be made in regards to any modifications, so perhaps that could be clarified. Besides that, it is of great interest why the seizures, my understanding at least, seizures are listed as a separate line item on the city budget rather than be listed under the police department? Are we that, are, are, are we city Waukegan dependent on seizures to such an extent that we have it listed as a separate item? And last time, the last meeting, when there was a Chicago group, we're not stupid, we know what's going on, wanting to come into our city, acquire for a dollar a property for foster children, and that's fine, but you know what? Stay in Chicago, not in Waukegan. I would, first of all, I was offended because why was not that opportunity be made to all Waukegan organizations? Why is a Chicago outsider being given this opportunity, and we are not? And the second thing is that, you know, here we are, you're asking, you know, to increase our property taxes while a Chicago group to come in and they're not gonna pay property, they're gonna get all these benefits. I propose rather instead, and I'm glad to see that we came with some initiatives to open it up, possibility, but why not? If you're gonna give something away for a dollar, that opportunity, we have you as veterans, lot of disabled vets, Waukegan residents, give them that opportunity for a dollar to buy a Waukegan home, they're gonna pay property taxes, they are Waukeganites already. I would rather personally, myself, help them out than help someone who's not a Waukeganite. Thank you very much. I'll be on the 20th, whenever your next meeting, with extensive list of suggestions, what can be done to balance the budget, anything but increase the property taxes as a last resort. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next would be Mr. Chris Blanks, 409 Oak Street in Waukegan.
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan, Illinois. Last city council meeting I was here, it was good to hear that they was taking some consideration around the $500 empowerment. The first time that I had ever stepped foot inside of the city council meeting was regarding and surrounding the $500 empowerment. That summons me here because of the inequitable and unfair enforcement of that ordinance. And so I'm here today, and I'm glad to hear it's gonna, you know, you're taking some consideration towards it. I'd like to, if I can, just kind of offer some encouragement or suggestion, and I know I heard someone say that they was considering making an amendment to that particular ordinance. As I have stressed, you know, to a few other people that, you know, it's kind of difficult to put a new tire on a warped wheel. And what I, what I mean by that is, and I'm sure that you all might find some way or feel that this particular ordinance could be savaged, but I would strongly suggest that since this is a new administration, you all do have the power to scrap and to do away with this so-called old $500 empowerment, and to make it a new, to create one of your own. It shouldn't even have to be called the $500 empowerment, considering how many people have been hurt, how many homes have been broken, the amount of hardship and pain it has been caused. Just to mention of a so-called, or a towing ordinance, it causes people pain. I would like to strongly suggest that if anything is done, you as a new administration or as a new mayor, redo it. Do away with what we have come to know as a $500 empowerment as for where people have been hurt under this ordinance. It's just, it's, it was, you know, it was bad from the beginning, and like I said, if there was ever a case or a situation where you would reinvent the wheel, this is definitely one. So that's just a suggestion I would like to make also. You know, I like to look at the fact that the only time, I have to look at the fact that it appear that the only time that this particular issue can make it back, and this is a genuine concern of mine, and there's no political or religious motives behind it, but it appear to me, that seems to me that the only time that this particular issue can make it back to the city council floor is during the automatic election. The pain and suffering of our community's people is not to be used as some cheap pawn, as though it's a political chip in some cheap game of poker. I would like to think that whoever is taking this into consideration, that you taking it into consideration in the best interest of the people and not to... One last thing I want to mention in closing is that if there is some way under this ordinance, considering that, and I know there's a lot of litigation and legalities going around this, if there's a mayor, a former mayor and a chief who is still being legally defended for the hardship and the pain that this thing has caused the people, if there's any way that as a community, considering that this city is still under hardship finances and trying to find ways to get funding, if there's any way that we can find that we should no longer have to pay for the legal defense of a mayor who is no longer mayor and a chief who is no longer chief, let's find a way to keep them doing it and put that money back here to the citizens in the community where it belong. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Mr. Newton Finn for coming out on our opening day for our organization. Appreciate you coming out. I will be coming back with more information on some of the initiative that we have taken with our organization. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Blanks. Next up is Violet Ricker, 10 North Sheridan Road, Waukegan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Violet Ricker. I live at 10 North Sheridan Road, and I am the Director of Waukegan Main Street, our Downtown Development Nonprofit Organization. I'm here tonight to keep you up to date on what Main Street has been up to, and thank you Mayor Sabanjin very much for recognizing Holiday Fest. We had a really wonderful time. And I do especially want to thank the mayor and Alderman Sam Cunningham for attending and reading books at the Genesee Theater. We had a great crowd of kids there before we did the Christmas tree lighting. And I would also really like to thank Tom Haggerty and the Public Works Department. Your guys did a wonderful job hanging up the wreaths and putting in the Christmas decorations to help us get everything looking nice downtown. So thank you, Public Works Department. The window decorating contest that the mayor mentioned, we had over 20 participants, and that was more than we've ever had before. If you have a chance to go up and down Genesee Street and County Street, it looks beautiful down there, and all the windows will be decorated for the rest of the month. We also had a 50/50 raffle, and our winner was Rod Swank. He won $850, with the rest of the proceeds going to Main Street. And one of the other projects that we've been working on is a new Downtown Development logo for, to help people recognize all of the progress that's going on concurrently in downtown Waukegan and at the lakefront. So we just selected that logo, and that was created by Dr. Marco Antonio Cruz, who we've been working with. He's a wonderful volunteer who was so kind as to donate that logo, and we look forward to recognizing him at city council in the coming weeks and presenting that logo to you and telling you more about what we're doing. And finally, I just want to thank the mayor for the article that you read today. I think it's really important that we all recognize the importance of public-private partnerships, and thank you for setting Downtown Development as a priority. We really appreciate that. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing you next month to tell you what we're up to. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate everything Main Street does as well. Okay. Next up, we'll take a motion to accept the minutes of November 15, 2010, regular meeting and executive session, and November 18, 2010, special meeting minutes and executive session minutes. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Larson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. We don't have any resolutions or proclamations before this evening, and first up, under item seven, would be committee reports and motions. Public Safety Committee Report, Alderman Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met at 6 o'clock on November 29. Just so you know, on my committee includes Aldermen's Moiseo, Conkin, Rivera, and Figueroa. Invite you to cover the committee meetings. Under, there was no old business. Under new business, item A, emergency repairs to engine three under the fire department category. The, the Waukegan Fire Department needed emergency repairs to engine number three. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to have inland Detroit Diesel slash Allison complete emergency repairs to engine number three. Total cost for the rebuild, removal, reinstallation, and special synthetic transmission fluid will be between $10,500 and $11,000, and the chief is looking to make sure that it's possible to pay that through the foreign fire tax that is collected, and ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, under the police department, restricted parking, permit parking at Victory Street, Philippa Avenue and Chapel Street between Washington Street and Clayton Street. This has to do with parking, more effective parking control around the old high school. This will be effective January 1st. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to draft an ordinance to reflect restricted parking to no parking between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM on school days, except by resident permit on the west side of Victory Street between Washington Street and Clayton Street. Street between Washington Street and Clayton Street, west side of Philippa Avenue between Washington Street and Clayton Street, and the east and west side of Chapel Street between Washington Street and Clayton Street. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
In the 8th Ward, item C, a yield sign, Eastwood Road, westbound at Charleston Road. There's a T-intersection that, on Charleston, that might help control some of the speeding that goes down that side street. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to draft an ordinance to reflect the placement of a one-way yield sign for westbound Eastwood Road at Charleston Road. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it.
Item D, request for professional services and permission to begin competitive process for CIP project on the police department roof. The Waukegan, the Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to begin the competitive bidding process based on the specifications that will be developed by RRP Incorporated, Waukegan, Illinois. Funding for the professional services provided by RRP Incorporated, 1725 North Lewis Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois, 60085, will be taken from the Capital Improvement Bond Funds, General Obligation Series C. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest. Aye. Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
And just a little information, a check was received from the Illinois State Police. The Waukegan Police Department received a forfeiture check in the amount of $13,396.26 from the Illinois State Police, and that will be going into the general fund. And that is all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Larson. Next is Judiciary Committee Report, Alderman Figaroa.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Judiciary Committee met on November the 29th at 6:30 p.m. There's no old business. First item under new business was for zoning calendar 2306 for the petitioner, Chi Lothan Location, Washington Road between Lakehurst and McGaw Roads. This is in a 9th Ward. There's a preliminary plat of the McGaw Road Commercial Subdivision. The Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to have the Corporation Council draft an ordinance approving the final plat of the McGaw Road Commercial Subdivision with conditions as outlined by staff.
We have the motion by Alderman Figaroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
B, Corporation Council to, this is the zoning count 2307 for the petitioner, Green Bay Crossings. The location is west terminus of the Apple Avenue and west of Green Bay Road. It's for a conditional use permit for a composting facility. And the people who are gonna be running the facility came and made a presentation. It's not your regular run-of-the-mill, it's high-tech composting facility. The idea is that with this composting facility, none of the normal fumes that are related to composting facilities will be emanating. So, the Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to have the Corporation Council draft an ordinance approving the composting facility at the west terminus of Apple Avenue, west of Green Bay Road.
We have the motion by Alderman Figaroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Next item, and that's related also to the same project, zoning calendar 2307. This is for the request of a map amendment from B2, General Commercial to I2, General Industrial, same project. The Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to have the Corporation Council draft an ordinance approving the map amendment from B3, General Commercial, to I2, General Industrial.
We have the motion by Alderman Figaroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda has to do with the Amendment to City Code, Section 1130, Vehicle Repairs. It is, the petitioner, of course, is the city of Waukegan. It's amendment to the city code changing the hours of operation for vehicle repair establishments. The Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to approve, as presented, the ordinance amending the city code, Section 1130, changing the hours of operation for vehicle repair establishments. And the hours are from 6, wait a minute, actually, it's from 7:00 p.m. on the day, on that day until 6:00 a.m. the following day. In other words, we have no operations of vehicle repairs overnight.
Yes, Alderman Moisio.
It says 6:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., and the ordinance, it says 8:00 p.m.
I'm sorry.
Which is correct.
It's the ordinance, the actual ordinance.
The ordinance is correct.
Let's say 8:00 p.m. The ordinance is correct.
The trend is wrong.
Seven to...
Okay. All right. So, the ordinance, the motion should read to, the motion would be to approve an ordinance amending the Waukegan Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, regarding vehicle repairs to limit the hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. in the evening.
Actually, it's from 8:00 p.m. until 6:00 a.m. That's overnight, to avoid overnight. You can't do it during, just during the day.
To those daytimes. Okay. That's fine. I think the semantics are probably, we get the point.
It's right on the ordinance.
It's right on the ordinance. Yeah, Alderman Conken.
No, the whole purpose is to avoid overnight.
Exactly. Late night and overnight. Sure. Alderman Conken.
I understand that the purpose is to avoid overnight working on vehicles and late, working on vehicles in residential areas, but do we have any businesses that are actually located? I'm talking about something like on Belvedere Road that might be a garage that's located within 50 feet of residential district, but they're actually a business, so they'd be required to shut down at 8:00 o'clock at night? I'm assuming they're within the 50 feet.
I have one on Washington that doesn't do much, but they do do some work.
And I've gotten calls, they're concerned about this because they say they do a good deal of business there normally, but they're in a business district, they're on a major street, and I don't really see that as a big interference with the residential as opposed to somebody in the middle of a neighborhood working on his car at 2:00 in the morning.
It's based on a residential district, so.
If they're within 50 feet of a residential. Right. Well, it depends on the proximity to the residential district, though.
The intent is clear.
I was worried about somebody like that.
Yeah, within 50 feet.
But, yeah, but from the enforcement standpoint, that would be an enforcement, you know, we need to, which, unfortunately, Russ is not here tonight, but as we said before, this mainly affects a lot of those, not just on, but deep inside residential neighborhoods. I mean, a house on one side and a house on the other side and a house in the back. But I do understand what you're saying, too, Alderman. But I think if we talk with Russ, and that's who will be, the zoning department will be enforcing this ordinance, we have a better understanding as to how and where it's going to be, how it's supposed to be enforced.
Okay. Alderman Conken, are you satisfied?
Yes, sir.
With that? Okay. Do we have any other questions? Yes, Alderman Rivera.
You know, yeah, it's fine, but, you know...
Could you speak into the mic, please?
It still has to be black and white. You know, I mean, our code department, they need to know. You know, they just can't, you know, assume before they give any fines, are we doing this right? They need to know exactly what we're looking for. So, it has to be in black and white in order for us to enforce and to get into any other problems that may occur in the future. So, it has to be black and white.
Well, might I suggest, given the amount of questions here?
Your Honor, it is in black and white.
All right. Would you like to read the actual ordinance, Alderman?
Yeah, let me read it. Section 1130, Vehicle Repairs. And I'm sure that all of the aldermen got copies of this, where it says, "In locations within 50 feet of a residential district, it shall be unlawful for any person to repair, service, or test any motor vehicle between the hours of 6:00 p.m. of one day to 6:00 a.m. the following day." In other words, to avoid overnight repair. The provision supplies, oh, excuse me, the provision, the provision applies to repaired garages, whether permitted or operating under a conditional use permit, as well as individuals working on their own vehicles, again, within 50 feet of residential. This came about because we have a lot of neighborhood automobile repairs in there. They come in there, they repair cars, and sometimes a party breaks out. And they're there till 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, especially during the summer, and we've had a lot of complaints from residential area. So, this is in locations within 50 feet, whether you're a resident repairing your car. Now, if you close the garage and you're working on it, I don't think that anybody's gonna come and knock on your door. We just want to avoid the noise. This came about as part of the ord noise. We wanted to get this done ahead of time.
All right. Let me just confirm again, just so I'm gonna read this into the record one more time.
One more question?
Go ahead, Alderman.
Well, my question then is, for an example, a San Jose repair shop on Washington Park and Belvedere, their property backs up to a residential area. So, are we saying that as long as they're fixing cars 50 feet away from that residential area, they can be open later? Let's say 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock? Okay, that's fine. I'm good with it then. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. One more time, just so it gets read correctly, the hours, I want to make sure the hours are understood, that this is a preclusionary ordinance that says you cannot do something during established timeframe. That timeframe precludes that type of work from 8:00 p.m. in the evening until 6:00 a.m. the following morning.
Yes.
That's what we are voting on. I just wanted to make sure that that was read into the record as correctly as was possible. So, we have the motion by Alderman Figaroa, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
I might have voted aye, but explain my vote. I think the noise ordinance would take care of this. I don't think we need another ordinance, but I understand what you're trying to do. I vote aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye. And just to respond to what Alderman Tempest has said, we've got other changes coming to the noise ordinance, and I think that there's been a large clamor, especially this last several months, from residents asking for changes. We wanted to get this done right away.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The eyes have it. Thank you. Alderman Figaroa, does that conclude your business?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the, we can't act on this, but also in the Judiciary Committee, we had an amendment to the daycare homes ordinance that doesn't appear on the... And it's a simple change, and it's talking about allowing notifications via normal mail versus certified mail, just to reduce the cost. But hopefully, we can get that on the next agenda, two weeks from tonight.
Certainly, we can have that on for the 20th. I don't think that loss of that much time will hurt anything, so, thank you, Alderman.
And then that's it.
That does conclude. Okay. And I do want to announce, too, that this evening, we do have an executive session that we will be going into. We normally do that following the alderman's comments, and once we come out of executive session, we will close the meeting. So, once we go into executive session, for all intents and purposes, that will be the end of the meeting. Now, we move to Labor Relations Committee, item A. I present this as the Chair of Labor Relations Committee, and who is here to speak to this this evening? Who would we, the chief is, okay, chief, we'll probably ask on you to come forward, and I'll read it. Why don't you come forward, because I'm sure there'll be questions. But the Labor Relations Committee met, and we, our task was to approve an amendment to an agreement between the city of Waukegan and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 473, for the purpose of adding the rank of captains. And I'll take, I will make the motion and second it by Alderman Rivera. And I think, chief, I'd just like you to give the aldermen and the audience an overview of what this is all about and explain how this is going to work. Please.
Approximately a year ago, we started negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters as the captains asked to join the union. We have, at this time, four captains on the Fire Department, so this affects those four captains. In addition, their bargaining unit is one bargaining unit, which includes lieutenants and firefighters. During this negotiations, numerous portions of the contract, which apply to the lieutenants and to the firefighters, we had captains added into the contract in the language. It had to do with the increments in which captains could pick their vacation, their health insurance. It also included the waiver of their clothing allowance for this year, so they gave that back. We established their insurance and also anything in regards to grievance procedures and transfer duty trades and job duties. It also included performance evaluations for captains, as well as whether or not a captain would have to maintain their paramedic service, at which time, all four captains are paramedics. It also had a change to their salary. We had to update the salary ordinance. Their salary was increased to 3% over the top lieutenant, and there are five steps that are included here, including a step that, over 20 years, they would get an added $900. And this was not retroactive. They have not had a pay raise since fiscal '08-'09, and there is a 4% increase over what they made back then. Again, there's a 3% difference between the top-paid lieutenant and the bottom-paid captain.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Alderman Tempest.
Boy, I got a lot of questions.
He gave me the bottom line. What's the top lieutenant and the top captain? What's the difference in the salary? Dollar-wise?
I can't speak to the top lieutenant at this time unless I go through the contract. But there's five steps for captain, there's seven steps for lieutenant, and between the top lieutenant and the bottom captain, there's 3%.
I don't quite get an answer, but that's okay. I'll get it later. The rank of captain.
Yes.
We now have a rank where you choose who you want as your different, you gotta shift A, B, and C. You got your commanders, are you, what's the rank? What's the official name you give?
There are battalion chiefs.
Battalion chiefs, thank you. Why do we need the rank of captain? Captains used to, way back when, captains were in charge of the ships. Now, we have the rank of battalion chief. Why do we need the rank of captain anymore?
The battalion chiefs are the head of the ship. The captains, and there are only one on each ship, there's one captain on each ship, and due to financial and to the benefits to allow your battalion chiefs to have a day off, you have to have somebody take and replace them. And you have to remember that we are replacing our management person with a bargaining unit member, once this is, for that particular day. So, there is, there is need to either change the captains to battalion chiefs, Alderman, or... or...
No, there's, I disagree. Well, go ahead.
You have to have, contractually, you have to have, or not contractually, but for benefit purposes, you can't work your battalion chief every day. I wish I could, but you can't. You have to give them days off and vacation time and...
In this, in these days of economic crisis, we have an assistant chief. Could he fill in at times to be a battalion chief?
We have been filling in, Alderman, because we are on, uh, not only are our battalion chiefs on furlough, which actually puts them less than the captain, once, uh, once the contractual situation is dealt with here, but the battalion, uh, the battalion chiefs fill in for each other, as far as the ones that are on days, we actually fill in during their furlough time. Your chief takes and rides as a commander to fill in for your battalion chief.
I knew, that's why I asked you, I didn't think you would volunteer that. But is there, do we have to have a captain being an assistant, because you got your commander here, now you got the captain underneath? What duties does he fulfill when he's there, when, he's gonna fill in, when the com...
Your captain would be filling in in regards to command at a fire.
Okay.
And your captain would be taking care of the day-to-day duties to run the five stations, as far as, each station has a commander, a lieutenant, and, uh, and then the battalion chiefs are in charge of the whole ship, all five stations. And that captain fills in upon occasion for that battalion chief.
Okay. Well, I still look for more ways to kind of, a little disappointed in that the captains who always, management, uh, felt it necessary to become a union, are, what kind of benefits on health insurance, are they now paying ten percent like the rest of union people?
They are paying the same as what they were paying previously, which is ten percent, same as the lieutenants.
Okay, okay. I just think that's important. And what do, I know management pays ten percent, what percent does the union members pay?
Well, the union is split. The lieutenants and the captains pay ten percent, and the firefighters pay twenty percent.
Oh. So we have a disparity there, but they're in the same union?
That is correct.
And the firefighters pay what, again?
Twenty percent.
But the higher-paid guys pay less?
Ten percent.
Ten percent. That's interesting, what a great union they have. Okay, I have, I have problems as far as the captains going into the union. I always felt they should be management, if they're gonna direct people, they should be on the management side. I guess this, does this, did this come down from a negotiations or from an arbitrator?
It, this came from negotiations as far as the captains into the contract. The contract was negotiated between the union and the city, but an arbitrator did not rule on this, other than the captains applied to join the union.
When are you gonna join the union? You know, that's what it's coming to, really. Do we have any management rights as far as, in the future, as a city faces serious economic problems? And you belong to a club, it's a fireman's club, we got the policeman's club, we got the teacher's club, you know, we're all clubs, but is there any way that, in the future, that we have written the contract that we may have to reduce numbers?
There is a management rights clause in the contract.
Okay, okay. Thank you, chief, very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the job you're doing, too.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a few...
Yes, Alderman Cunningham.
I have a few questions of my own. You know, chief, if you could back up, I thought you said that there was a, an agreed-upon increase of four percent?
There was an increase of four percent from what they were making in 2008-'09. So they went two years, there's a four percent, but the, still, the, the actual difference is three percent between the lieutenants, top, and the captains right now. And there is no retroactivity, so this would go back to November first, as far as the raise. So, they did not receive any raise since fiscal year 2008-'09.
I know, if, well, then, so, let me get this right. There was not a single rate increase for captains, or a single rate increase for management? I know management as a whole, I think the City of Waukegan did not receive a rate increase.
That is correct, Alderman. Since '08-'09, management has not received any, any rate increases, and captains were included in '08-'09 and in '09-'10, in the salary ordinance with no raise.
Okay, but they received the other benefits as other firefighters?
They received whatever benefits that, uh, that the salary ordinance...
Right, so they did receive, they received part of whatever the regular firefighters get, they just didn't get that, that bump, that two percent, that three percent?
Whatever it may have been.
Whatever, whatever that was, okay. And I want to go back to Alderman Tempest. Typically, under supervision, if you become a supervisor, you're asking to step into the management ranks. That's typically how management works. When you say, "I want to become a supervisor from a supervisor," and you're in this particular position as a supervisor, lieutenant, captain, chief, etc., you're expecting it to go into that, that ladder of success. With us agreeing, this is not something that they said they want to arbitrate into. We agreed to these terms, correct?
No, they actually...
They filed, but...
They filed, and then it was negotiated, is that correct?
So we agreed to, they negotiated, we negotiated, so now there's an agreement between the city and the captains, and it says, "Okay, it's okay for you to join the union." That's what you're telling us, correct? Right, Tina?
There's state law and there's federal law.
Here we go.
State law, they filed with the Illinois Board, Labor Board...
Right.
For the ability to file with a union.
Okay, and they can do that, just so we're clear, they can do that.
They can do that. The state board incurred that they could. We could have gone to arbitration, or we could have gone before the Labor Board and disputed it, and that would have cost anywhere between sixty to a hundred thousand dollars in legal fees.
Okay.
So, we opted to negotiate instead. We did engage a federal mediator for part of the negotiations, which is at no cost to the city. So we did opt to negotiate this process versus fight this process at the Labor Board, and there had been established in other municipalities that are similarly situated, where municipalities lost at the Labor Board and fire captains were awarded to go into the contract. So, we kind of looked at the scale of money and opted to negotiate, but your questions are valid ones, and they're ones that municipalities are struggling with throughout the state. And it's really the leanings of the state at this point, which is pro-labor.
Okay. Now, let's get back. So now, we don't even have, right now, we have, I'm gonna get back to Larry Tempest's point, there's technically no management. They're all a part of the same organization. I know you're saying, "No, it isn't," but you have now, you have now, your management personnel is a part of the same union that is supposed to govern their subordinates.
Their rank is, the battalion chiefs is the, the staff that's your management. The battalion chiefs, your deputy chief, your, your chief are the, the management staff.
No, well, I, and I agree with you on that. However, for those who don't know, the captain runs the shift, typically, the personnel on the ship. If there's a fire on that ship, the captain is in control, where the battalion chief is watching the whole, you know, operations of it. Am I right?
The battalion chief is in charge of the operations.
Of the shift.
Of the, the entire ship.
Right.
And they're also in charge of the entire fifteen persons, seventeen persons, how many there are at that particular scene. That captain is in charge of two people, they may be in charge of five people, but they're in charge of their crew, too. The only time that the captain is actually in charge of the entire scene would be where the battalion chief would leave and go to another fire, and they would turn it over to that captain, or if the captain is filling in for the battalion chief.
And my, my point exactly. The battalion chiefs will operate the entire shift for that particular day, then your captain should be in charge of either a particular scene or situat... I tell you what, Your Honor, I have a lot of questions, a lot of reservations about this. I want to hold this matter over, so I can get some of these answers, some of the questions answered, whether personally by the chief, or by Tina, or by yourself. That's where I'm at right now.
Okay. Well, given the, this body's interpretation of Robert's Rules of Orders, does not require a second for that holdover, so I will, I will, we will honor it. And, you know, obviously, Sam, all I can say, and this goes to everybody sitting at this dais that's an alderman, we acted on this several weeks ago, this is, has been around and before us for a while, so I would ask you that between now and the twentieth, that you make sure that you find the time to meet with the appropriate, whether it's...
Your Honor, in all due respect, this is the first I'm hearing about this.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The first I'm hearing about it.
Okay.
Nothing, there's nothing here, it's the first I'm hearing about it, and now we gotta vote on a four percent increase, a four percent increase. I understand they didn't have it then, but understands, what one person does, another's gonna do. So you better get ready for every management from, this is senior-level management. We ain't talking about frontline, senior-level management about to go into the union. And this is the first time we're hearing about it. So, I think, I, I think, I don't know if I'm speaking for Alderman, I know I'm speaking for me.
Well, then absolutely, you have a chance to talk to Tina, to the chief, to Barry in HR, and get all your questions answered, but please make sure that you do that, and so that now, the next time we have this before us on the twentieth, we will be prepared to act on it.
And, and, chief, please have your captains available, 'cause I want to ask, I'd like to go to the frontline people and ask, and see what's really, what the down and dirty is at, 'cause there's not the down and dirty here. Where is, I'm with Larry Tempest now, where is the contract? Who has the contract?
All of that capital was required for Labor Relations Committee meeting.
Yeah.
I missed that meeting.
All right, thank you, Tina, thank you very much.
Tina, could you repeat your answer one more time, please?
It was part of the Labor Relations Council that's distributed, but we can redistribute all the information.
Absolutely, okay. All right, you set, you all right?
I'm fine.
Okay, good, let's, then that is being held over. Do we have any old business before us today? I don't believe we do. Any communications? No communications. Then, under new business, item 10, new business slash recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A is to approve the payroll dated November 17th, 2010, in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents, and December 1st, 2010, in the amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item B, approved bills dated December 6th, 2010, in the amount of one million, eighty-five thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-four cents. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item C, we have the request for a raffle sale by the Waukegan High School Athletic Booster Club for the months of December 2010, January, February, March, and April of 2011. Motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Item D, approval of intergovernmental purchase and sale agreement between the City of Waukegan and the Board of Trustees, uh, excuse me, and the Board of Trustees of Community College District Number 532, involving the former New Sun site, northwest corner of Sheridan Road and Madison Street. Take a motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
I'd like to speak to the...
Oh, yes, Alderman Tempest.
Please, I sat, I came an hour early to read through this intergovernment agreement. It says in the beginning here, the college is gonna try and get forty-seven million, nine hundred thousand dollars from the, from the state to construct this new building. Might take over two years to get that. On page two of the contract, it talks about the parties further agree to explore possibilities to partner with Seller Greentown Waukegan Regreating Program. I have no problem with that, as long as it isn't a mandatory part of the contract. Then on page five, on page four, item H, from the date here on until the closing date, seller show exercise reasonable efforts to maintain and operate the property in good and business-like manner in accordance with good and prudent business practice. Ordinary wear and tear casualties accepted. Well, this is a rundown building anyway, I don't know, we need that in there. And then I went, it talked about on page five, about the asbestos, I believe we've had that removed, basically, to remove it. But, but the real big problem that I have with it is when we come over to page nine, it talks about agreement regarding deconstruction, demolition of existing structure of the property. It says here, "The college construction service faculty and expect to provide associate employment and job training for, to come into the building and start to demolish it somewhat." Well, that's, that's nickel-and-dime stuff in my mind, you're not gonna be able to start knocking that building apart with, with big cranes and so forth. And then they say, "However, we're, it's up to us, the seller will complete all remaining demolition activities at no expense to the College of Lake County." At no expense. But they're going to the state to get a, a big bond issued for forty-seven, forty-eight million dollars, but they want the city to continue to knock it down with some bond money that we have sitting there, according to, if we don't use it for that, we will lose it. Well, if we don't use it for that, we don't have to pay it, do we? That's, that's four hundred thousand dollars, I believe, is that about right? If I may ask no else, or is that eight hundred thousand?
The last estimate that we have, the number is roughly four hundred thousand.
Okay, and how long ago is that estimate?
It's, it's over a year old.
Year, okay, but four hundred thousand, so, I'm guessing about four hundred thousand dollars from the City of Waukegan to knock this building down. Of course, we're gonna get the value of the construction, that, so forth, that's four hundred thousand dollars. Why can't the College of Lake County take this? We give them the land for a dollar, hey, we're done with it. We're done with it. No more ifs or not. You want to use the land, bless you, we're for you, we're for you, but you have the big deep pockets. You have the entire Lake County to tax and get your money from. We have little Waukegan, economically distressed is why you want to put the college here anyway. Accept the whole responsibility, don't leave us hanging there. So, that's my problem with this contract, and I really think it needs to be taken out, and those words taken out of the contract, and say that Lake County will be, after sale, one dollar, it's theirs, period. We'd have nothing more to do with it. Go ahead and build your college, wonderful, thank you, it's about time you did a little more for Waukegan. That's my problem with this, Mayor, and then it says the bonds, well, you know, about eight years ago, we're forty million dollars in debt, we're now over a hundred million dollars in debt. I am concerned about our continued bond indebtedness. I'm deeply concerned. I've been concerned. So that's my comments in regards to this, Mayor, and...
Thank you, Alderman.
And I think the council should hold this over and renegotiate.
Well, if you might, before you make that request, one thing we'd like, Corporation Council would like to review or actually explain part of the language in here, and I will also say that from the very beginning, when the, we did the last bond issuance, the City of Waukegan incorporated into that bond issuance the destruction or demolition of that building. That was always our intention to do so, and that was very clear and upfront when that bond issuance was brought forward. So, at this point, you know, basically, if we hand it over to them for a dollar, the problem with that is, is there's no out clause if the project doesn't move forward. We've built that into this agreement, so that if they, they do not get the money, we're able to, we're able to reacquire the site.
It's very easy, Mayor, to put in the same clause, we'll sell this two dollars, and after two years, you have none of it. two years, you have nothing, and it goes back to us. Very simple.
It is, it is in there.
As far as the bond issue goes, you know, we were thinking about developing that and putting it on the tax rolls as far as condos overlooking the lake. And I think that was in many people's mind when that was in the bond issue, that if you could get that, get stuff back on the tax rolls, it would really help our community. This is not going to put anything on the tax rolls, it's not there now because we own it. That's my problem, Your Honor. I don't think this is the greatest agreement we could get. I think if they want the property, they should be willing to take it for a dollar, and if you don't do it in two years, it comes back to us. That simple.
Well, Alderman, part of this is that if we, if, let's go back to the Beitler project for a moment, which was the original project envisioned for that site. That was never a free project. The city was going to provide all manner of incentives for that. And those incentives would have added up to the point of gaining back the tax revenue from that wouldn't have happened overnight. It would have taken quite a while to have gotten that return, as it does with most incentives. And with Beitler, really, the last meeting we had with them is that there's no market for a project there. There's no market for condos, not only just Waukegan, but everywhere. You look all up and down the North Shore, Chicago, not only are there no projects going, but you even look in Chicago where projects have been draped that were skeletonized, and then that was it, as far as they got. We feel that this is a great opportunity for Waukegan to bring a educational facility growth into our downtown, to bring young people into the downtown, to bring professors full-time courses. This is not the same sort of setup as Lake Shore Campus. Now, it's not, is it perfect? We think it's the best agreement that both bodies of government could reach. One of the things that we find attractive is, well, it's related to the demolition part of it. They will bring Waukegan residents in and train them how to disassemble a building. There is a process called LEED, L-E-E-D. Under this process, you create what are known as green buildings. And in creating those green buildings, certain percentage of the material going in or of the existing site has to be recycled. So part of the project is to train Waukegan residents how to do that. That's a skill that will not just be useful in this project, but further down the line as other projects come online, that could even include art space. Because a lot of that building will have to be recycled as it's rebuilt, and other existing building projects. It's an opportunity we don't want to turn our back on. We don't want to be perceived as sticking our finger in the eye of the College of Lake County because of the fact that maybe the agreement isn't wholly geared towards all on Waukegan's side. There had to be some give and take here. And we believe that this is something that will help to kickstart our downtown development by bringing people down there. It's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take several years to get the project going. But they have a timeframe. They need to respond to certain requirements from the state of Illinois, and we are trying to help them to make that timeframe. Our holding this over will then force them to meet their next meeting. So they will not be able to act on this at the next meeting, and it could delay it depending how long this ends up being delayed. They may miss their deadlines. And I really do not want to put this project at risk. Now, a couple of things that you spoke to, I'd like to have Corporation Council to respond to a little bit more, in a little bit more specificity, so please.
Yes, and Alderman, I appreciate your questions. They're good ones and need to be answered. The original proposal was that we would sell it to the College of Lake County for a dollar. And then it'd be their land, and they'd go ahead and demolish everything else. Problem with that, in my opinion, in the Corporation Council's office and as far as city staff is concerned, was that we're going to give a very valuable piece of land overlooking our lakefront to somebody for a buck, and maybe they'd get the funding to build the campus, and maybe they wouldn't. That did not seem to be in the interest of the taxpayers of this city or the city government. The language that you referred to on page nine is precisely the exact language in the memorandum of understanding already approved by this council. You'll find that language on page two of that memorandum of understanding, which has already been approved, I believe unanimously, by this council. The idea is that College of Lake County would like very much to begin a program of deconstruction. They would like to train Waukegan residents as well as some of their own students in this specialty, which is a lucrative one and one that in terms of green technology would lead to jobs. They would, and really, in a rather amazing way, they, if this project collapses, and we have had to go ahead and demolish it with bond money, they have agreed to reimburse us for half, even though their campus project fails. I find that extraordinary on the part of the college. I don't know how any college official- Where is that? What page? Right here. It's right in there. Excuse me?
What is that? What do you mean that's about?
For all reasonable demolition of site clearance expenses.
Page nine.
Last sentence. If we have to, if we have to knock it down, seller may then provide 60 days notice to purchasers of an intended demolition of the building. That means that they can't, they can't get their deconstruction going in time to do it the way they'd like to. In that event, the purchaser, the college, agrees to reimburse seller, says, for half of all reasonable demolition and site clearance expenses, subject to further agreement by the parties, which would allow them to do it in kind, pay us back, we'll do in kind deconstruction in other city buildings that we would decide wanted to be deconstructed for our own purposes. I don't think we can get a better agreement out of a public body than this one in terms of them risking with us, if you will, to bring to our city a full-blown, basically $50 million, state-of-the-art, LEEDs-qualified building that will have full-time CLC departments, full-time students, full-time faculty. This is- I hear what you're saying. It's, you know- I hear what you're saying. $50 million, $47,900, they want $400,000 rest of it. $400,000 is going to stop them from this project? $400,000? Come on, dude. This is wrong. They want, give it probably for a dollar, the idea that they're going to knock it down, they're going to start it in two years, and if they don't get it going, you really give them an incentive, you get going or we get the property back and it's knocked down. Why would I give them $400,000 when they are the total Lake County and they're getting state money? Why are we going to put it in the taxpayers' back? Why? We're at a crisis right now, as far as I'm concerned. And what you're saying, I agree. Absolutely. Waukegan needs that kind of a college here. Absolutely. But I'm saying if they're going to go for a grant for $47,900, why don't they go for $47,850, you know? What's the difference when you're talking that kind of money? For us, it's a lot of money. Well, the building must come down one way or the other. The building has to come down. They, the college- The housing market will eventually turn around, and eventually that land, you just told me how valuable it is, eventually that land will be valuable. It don't have to come down now. We still have the Waukegan building, it's been sitting there for 40 years, that hasn't come down. And finally, it may be developed someday. But that's valuable land overlooking the lake, as you told me, and I believe that very much so, but, and I'm willing to go along with the College of Lake County taking it over, but not at our expense for demolition. If they want to demolish it and say in two years we're going to start it, fine. If you don't get it done, it goes back to us. That's a great deal. But you're asking, you're asking the college, then, to agree to, if the project doesn't go through, to convey it back to us for a buck, which they're agreeing to do. We're going to end up with that property back if this funding is not secured, the college isn't built. And yet, you're asking at the same time to go ahead and spend $400,000 on a demolition and then hand us back a lot for a buck that they've spent close to half a million dollars already on. No college in this country would entertain such a proposition. They're going for $48, $48 million. What are you talking about?
Well, Alderman, I think-
Half a million.
Okay.
Will you allow someone else?
Alderman Larson, please.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think it's fair to say that Alderman Tempest's logic is flawed in his analysis of this situation. We have a building that's there, okay? We're trying to work with an entity that plans to do something with the site. If for whatever reason that building doesn't get developed, it's still there. We've lost nothing. We haven't spent anything. They may have worked on the inside, hiring young folks who may want to learn the building trade to start demolishing the inside, which will make the eventual demolition cost less costly by any measure of logic, okay? But if it doesn't go forward, we still have a building. It can sit there for 40 more years until a builder comes in and, you know, if we decide to do something else with the site. This is an opportunity to help redevelop our downtown and lakefront, bring folks into downtown to help rebuild our commercial and retail community down here. Bring people into town. They may want to buy housing because they have a full-time staff position at the college that will be. This is a win-win situation for Waukegan. It's supported by every, every business and community group that's looked at this project from start to finish. This is a good opportunity. The College of Lake County, I believe, is an ethical and wonderful partner to move forward with this project. They've been striving for years to do exactly this. We should welcome it with open arms. I'm asking Alderman Tempest to vote, know if he wants to, but not hold this over. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Larson. Yes, Alderman Moisio, please.
Make my views, you know.
Alderman Moisio.
If you look at the top places to live in the United States-
Alderman Tempest, please, while Alderman Moisio has the floor.
If you look at the top places to live in the United States, they have one thing in common. One thing. They have an educational institution in their community, small or big. They have it. Higher educational institutions bring money in different ways. They bring people that spend money. I know what some people will say, it's just the College of Lake County, but it's still a higher educational institution that, one, educates people, has educated people working there, have people that will spend money, hopefully in ancillary ways. This is a win-win, in my opinion, situation. I understand Alderman Tempest's concern about the $400,000 and putting it on the taxpayers' backs, but we have got to do something. We've got to move forward as soon as we can. We've been waiting around for 50 years to get our asses moving. We've got to move on something and move quickly. I understand his concern about the demolition, but in my opinion, I agree with this. This is the best we're going to get. Let's get moving on this so that we can get something built down there that brings people down there. We all know that the goal, one of the goals of the master plan was to bring people to the downtown, however it may be, whether it was the Genesee Theater, whether it was residents, however, but you got to get foot traffic down there sometime. And if we don't get moving on this, we'll never have any foot traffic. We'll be talking about this 20 years from now about how we didn't move on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Cunningham.
Your Honor, and maybe it wasn't clear, but it, just so I'm clear on this, we're going to demolish that particular site first, and then CLC would then move on to their design plan. Is that, I think that's, that might be where the confusion is coming in. How does that go?
The process is to, first of all, to bring in people who they can develop job skills as far as deconstruction of the interior of the building.
Okay.
Then following that to move towards demolition. The building has to come down anyway. It is one of the biggest code violations within the city of Waukegan right now. And we are, as a community, we have no moral high ground if we do not take care of our own property, but we demand that others do the same thing.
And I agree that. Now, and if I'm not mistaken, one, the original talks about demolishing that building, one of the deal, I think one of the options that the steel and all that inside of the building would generate X amount of dollars, which would reduce our costs. And I guess, maybe to Alderman Tempest's point, is from the deconstruction and the stuff they get from that, any salvageable, anything that's salvageable, that will revert back to us, that we can use as part of that $400,000 demolition. Is that, is that the way this process is going to work? If so, then I think it goes into the spirit of what we all intended from, from the very beginning with the demolition of this.
Right.
That was the, that's the understanding I had, and maybe that's probably what's going on here, is it's not in, as we call, ABC order. Is it safe to say that?
Yes, because the majority of the demolition, the hardcore part of it, the heaviest part of the lifting of it, will come from the city, and we will have that ability to recycle.
Yeah. And Alderman, some of it will have to be reincorporated into the new structure in order to get the LEED certification that everybody's looking for for this building. So some of that stuff's going to be reincorporated into the new campus that's built.
Yeah, I'm being reincorporated, but whatever it is salvageable, we can take that to whatever the, however they do it now, those dollars will come back to the city and we can use. That was the, that was part of the original intent for the demolition, if I'm not mistaken. That was why it was so easy for us to say, yes, we'll take the building because of the cost of demolishing and some of the money that we'll get from demolishing the building, we'll go back and then. With that being said, I think we can, it's, it's a, it's a little bit easier to digest and to, you know, tell to residents of the city of Waukegan, yeah, this is why we're, we're not only moving forward with Greg's point, also trying to save dollars with Alderman Tempest's point. So I'm just hoping we're still in that, in that spirit.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And part of, part of it is that, as I said, this building has got to come down.
Oh, and I-
It is, it is a major, major-
We all know that.
It is dangerous. And we have, we have the homeless breaking into it. There are other things that have been going on there that we just do not want in our downtown, and we felt, that's why we put it in the CIP through the bond, was to get this building down. And now we've got this other option as far as cutting our cost of bringing it down. But I keep going back to this, this idea of the fact that Waukegan people will learn job skills during this process. And now, we have forgotten this other part of it, there will be several hundred construction jobs created by this project far sooner than the Beitler project ever would have brought online.
But wait, Your Honor, I think it goes without saying, this will be a major, major step in the right direction of developing our lakefront and downtown area, period. So I think it's, it, I don't think it's needing, we don't have to sell the point exactly what it is, we just, it's just some small-minded things that need to clear up. And I think I, at least I have gotten that cleared up right now. So up to Alderman Tempest right now, if either he wants to continue with this.
He will not hold it over. Alderman Rivera is asked to call the question. I will call the question.
It's a win-win for everybody.
Hold on, just, Alderman Rivera, if I could, beg your indulgence, I believe that Alderman Conken may have wanted to ask a question. Did you want to ask, Tom?
I just had one question. Thank you very much, Mayor. But the question I have is, you know, you made the statement that they're going to train Waukegan people and give them job skills. How do we guarantee Waukegan people get the job? From my understanding, this was going to be a class that was offered by CLC, so it sounds like you have to have an interest in the class and pay for the class to get the instruction to do this.
No, no.
Am I wrong?
There's no cost.
No. Alderman, if I might respond to that, we insisted that they put in, that they're going to be providing associate employment and job training during site clearance phase to Waukegan residents and CLC personnel. We're very, I just addressed that concern. We want our own people to learn these skills as well as students of the college who may not live in-
And by the way, many of the, of the young people that go to CLC are from Waukegan. So that's a double, that's a double bonus for us right there.
You know, Mayor, would it be like YCC Youth Bill? Would that be part of this?
Similar.
Okay.
I don't know that that organization itself would be part of it, but it'd be the similar approach to a, a learning environment.
Okay. Tony?
Maybe some of our graduates.
Some of the graduates, that's right. Well, I think that the...
Can I make a closing comment?
Okay, Alderman. And then we have the question called. Okay.
I just want a conclusion. I thought we could have got a little better deal. I am not against Lake County at that site. No way. It's a positive improvement. I just think, if you're going for that kind of money, they could have bit the whole apple. That's my concern. And I don't know how, I wasn't part of the negotiations, wasn't informed the negotiations, I really don't know. But I felt we could have got a better deal, and I, I'm sorry. Your father called me Scotty, and he did it for a reason. Okay? So with that, thank you for letting me close.
Thank you, Alderman. At that point, we have called the question. We'll take the...
Did we have the original?
Motion by Moiseo.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
I'm going to have to vote no, because I think we could have gotten them to pay for the whole demolition.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye. I think the college downtown would be a great asset if, if everything works out well.
Alderman Moiseo.
I've made my comments.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Eyes have it. Thank you very much. And Alderman Tempest, we do appreciate your comments. Thank you. I know that's all part and part of the fabric of getting this work done.
I'm competitive and I...
Yep, understood. Item, item E, authorization to sell $1 properties to local not-for-profit housing groups at cost. Take a motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moiseo.
If I may speak to that question?
Yes, Alderman Tempest.
Here I go again. Gosh. You know, I like when they come individually to the body. Who, because we can individually see the piece of property, what they intend to do with it. Example, the other day of, they wanted to put a home over there, and who else applied for it? And then I did a little further research with group homes, and I'll tell you the technique they used there, and I came from a good source that works on them. They'll put Waukegan people in for the first round, and then they'll import them from other communities and put them here because they want to get them away from their home environment. And here you are, stuck in the school system, everything else, with somebody else's headaches. And headaches, let's be honest. They're kids that are in need, and yes, they need need, but that's what happened. A lot of these homes for a dollar, I can understand, veterans, people with 80% of salaries, sell to them. The vet idea, you know, yes, I can understand that, but I think we need each, to really look at each individual piece of property that we're going to sell for a dollar, and not just have a blanket statement like the motion is before us.
I agree with that.
So I, with that, I'd like to hold that, that over.
Do you have any question, or maybe possibly Zell might like to be able to address any specific questions? Zell, would you mind coming up for a moment, just in case?
That was that memo he gave us. I read that, but it was...
Was it 222?
This is not for 222, though.
No.
Yeah, this is, Zell, did you see this memo?
How many $1 properties are we talking about?
Zell, come on up for a moment.
How many are we talking about?
Welcome to the firing gallery here, sorry, but...
Don't be shy.
He's not.
Would you like to explain to the Alderman exactly what's at work here?
Um, what, this has really nothing to do with any particular property. What's happening is that we have an agreement with Habitat for Humanity to turn over 15 properties to them because of another agreement, and I think we all understand that. But in the meantime, Habitat is under no obligation to purchase each dollar property that becomes available. Well, our position is, is that it's really time-sensitive. We don't have the luxury of time to take them, say, okay, are you interested in this property, before we actually move on it. So when we get the notification that the property is available, we kind of, we kind of have to move on it. Actually, B and, is it?
E and F.
E and F are really apart. They're actually the same thing. They are just suggestions as to ways to dispose of some of these properties that sit at Waukegan, doesn't get stuck with them, and all the maintenance and liability that go along with them. So that's, that's really what this is about. As it stands right now, we have maybe two properties that we might dispose of using this method going forward if we purchase more, and we are stuck with them. So it's, it's kind of, I mean, if we're doing this one by one, I don't really know how we approach that.
Alderman Larson first, please.
Uh, Zell, well, you were before judiciary last week to talk about this. He produced a memo outlining a couple of the options. I, I looked at similar programs. Schaumburg offers the same program for some of their properties, and I'm sure the 80% of the family median is pretty much standard in, in a lot of towns. Am I correct?
Well, it is, it is, Alderman. What's, what's happening with that is, we have obviously different levels of income. A person who is at 120% of median family income, now, this is, of course, kind of piggybacking on a housing program that we're actually doing, the neighborhood stabilization program. So a person at 120% can participate in that program. Well, at the same time, you're talking about houses that are obviously going to cost more money. So we have nothing available for people of lower income, which actually could afford to purchase a home if the price on the property is right.
Well, the last meeting, we had a person from Chicago that was looking at developing a group home, and I think it was pretty much unanimous that we weren't eager to offer that up based on Waukegan providing, you know, the $1 program. Individuals versus an entity that is looking for a group home. We can control that individuals are buying this rather than a group home or an entity representing a group home, correct?
We can control a property that we purchased for a dollar, spend rehab dollars in it, and then put it on the market for sale. A property that we sell to a not-for-profit housing organization, like Habitat, for instance, we, we, we can stipulate that they have to build an affordable unit, or provide an affordable unit on that property.
So we can stipulate that a group home with 10 or 12 individuals, which there are those types of facilities in towns all over the country, we can stipulate that we would not allow that through this program, correct?
That we would not allow the group home to purchase a... Well, it's not really a group home. Yeah, we can, first of all, answer your question, but it's not a, it's not a group. See, we cannot take these properties that we are purchasing for a dollar and then turn around and sell it to an individual.
It would require council approval to allow that kind of facility to open up. Additional facilities. Okay, I just want to make that clear.
Right, right.
Thank you, Alderman.
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Figueroa.
Just to answer the Alderman's, that would require a conditional use permit, because it is in a residential area.
I'm going to get that on the record.
We're talking about specifically 222 South Park.
Right, there we're talking about a specific property, but then, on the other hand, see, we kind of got, I guess, both of these tied together, and they really aren't tied together.
Well, it's a big difference for a single-family home that's going to go onto the tax rolls versus, now, I'm not against a group home, but I think it's, there's a real need for it, but we need a conditional use permit to go through the hearing process on that.
Well, you know, that's a decision that council will make, just as it is with this decision. Last report I got, we had 1,100, and I believe they told me, 39 vacant homes in the city of Waukegan, which at least 80% of those are foreclosed properties, going from, you know, properties that are held in inventory by HUD, properties that are held in inventory by, by Fannie Mae, by some, some just individual institutions. So I guess, you know, if we are comfortable with as many vacant homes as we can have in the city of Waukegan, then we can kind of do nothing. If we want to address that issue, then I think we, we are probably going to need some innovative ways, and we're not giving up control, I mean, any property in the city of Waukegan, particularly once it becomes property of the city of Waukegan. Council and the city control the properties.
Yeah, if I, if I, just real quick, if I could, you know, one thing, too, that comes to mind. These are not going to become rental property.
Absolutely not.
These are ownership.
This is...
And the folks who buy these homes and end up owning them have to go to classes. They have to be, they have to have an income. This is not something where we are talking purely subsidized housing, moving into neighborhoods. And I will say that, you know, my experience on the county, dealing with this, and what we've accomplished so far since I've been in the office, I think, have been pretty good. We have helped with this neighborhood stabilization. We've got families into homes that were not above their means.
Right.
These are not the same types of loans that we're all used to, the subprime mortgages, all of this. This is a whole different situation. These are going homes to people that have to have jobs, that have families, that provide stability for them, and I think it's a real positive for the community to have that type of home occupied, whereas, you know, given the return of the, of the market is going to take several years, those homes aren't going to be the first ones to go, or if they do go, they'll be bought by people in the end who may end up renting them.
I was about to say, what'll ultimately happen is that you'll have a lot of investors buying these properties, and so we're going to have, you know, we talk about how much subsidized housing we have in the city as it is. We could easily end up with even more. So this, this is just what we're up against as far as the housing market is concerned, and...
Thank you. Corporation Council would like to add something here as well.
Yes, Zell, I think that the council's expressed some reservation about item E with regard to just a blanket authorization for selling $1 properties to nonprofit housing groups. Let me, could I ask you this? Would it, would it cramp your style, impact your program if this, item E were to be amended to say, and subject to parcel by parcel council approval? Would that be a problem for you?
Well, even to say that we are going to do, sell them for a dollar, each one still has to come before council for approval.
So you wouldn't, that could be added to this?
It is.
There would be, anyway, but I'm just saying, you would not mind an amendment to that effect, just to clarify?
It's not just carte blanche, it's not just carte blanche to just go out and, you know, sell properties for a dollar. We're talking about, first of all, not-for-profit housing development agencies that they have to be, and these properties have to be affordable housing.
So what you're saying is that...
It doesn't say that.
No.
Maybe I could, if I could say this. There is a term known as CHODO, Community Housing Development Organization. Why don't we ask for an amendment to this that will add the term CHODO to this so that we can make the Alderman feel more comfortable about the fact? See, what I think is happening is they're seeing the words "local not-for-profit," and assuming right from that, that that means it will go into a halfway home of some sort or whatever, as the Alderman discussed, that he's concerned about.
Or not-for-cash rules.
Well, if it's a CHODO, and it's, and it's then repaired and brought up to spec and sold to somebody, that is where item, item F comes into play, is the, is the income range for that, correct?
Um, I'm a little confused, but what they, if they want to stipulate that the housing organization has to be a CHODO, I have no problem with that.
That will not, that, first of all, what we have to make sure of, that it doesn't violate any HUD regulations, what we're doing right now.
No, there's no violation there.
Okay. Why don't we do this, then? If I might ask, Alder, you want to hold it over?
Instead of trying to do it here in the, instead of trying to do it in the council floor tonight, get the, back together with our corporation council. The way it was worded on our thing here today, very confusing to the Alderman.
Then we can add the CHODO to it and...
Yeah, but let's, let's do it the right way.
Sure.
Get it before us properly. I know what Zell's trying to do. You do a good job, Zell, but the way this is worded on the thing, to sell private for nonprofit, it's, so it's, it's just confusing.
That's understood. Well, then, why don't we do this? If, if you would, since E and F are sort of inexorably intertwined, would it make sense to hold them both over?
If I could, Your Honor.
Please.
The memo that Alderman Larson mentioned that I gave last week, I actually stipulated that these two Fs were not one or the other. It's just an option, an opportunity to dispose of the properties and to make sure that we dispose of them in a way that's going to be productive for the city. If, if council wants to hold it over, I really have no problem with it, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Alderman.
So you're saying that there's more than just one property? We have several dollar properties that are waiting to be turned over?
At this moment, we have two properties that we acquired for a dollar, and actually one that we are kind of working through some legal things to get into, into our possession that Habitat did not take an interest in. We transferred five properties to Habitat.
So Habitat does not want these two?
They do not want these two.
So you want to get these into a single-family?
Well, they would continue to be single-family homes. They are single-family homes.
But why is non-for-profit in here?
Well, because, because a housing, a housing development corporation like Habitat could actually take this house, and they have, then they take responsibility for the rehabilitation, for the disposition and this whole thing.
Okay.
We are out of it, like you were saying about the new sun building, we are out of it.
Okay, so these two homes, they have to be turned over to a non-for-profit? Is that because of HUD or what?
No, that is not mandatory. We could actually rehab them and attempt to sell them ourselves, but I don't, I would not recommend that.
We're not in that business, and we're not getting in that business. I don't think any Alderman up here wants to see that. So why reinvent the wheel? You have professionals out there that have a long history of this type of service.
Right, this is what they do, you know, housing development.
So this is going to be held over, and I think that if I might, Alderman Tempest, we're going to move on to F, and I think that you should just request that be held over as well.
May I, please?
It'll be held over as well, per Alderman Tempest's request. Now we move to item G. I'd like to read this first, if I could. We're requesting a motion to approve temporary use of the city lot at the southwest corner of Sheridan Road and Belvedere Street for a Greentown-Waukegan community garden to be known as Lakeview Gardens, which was, that was property that we purchased using bond funding, so it has to be for a public purpose. The goal was to allow the Greentown organization to be able to work with our local schools to be able to turn that into a community garden. I believe that Corporation Council has some, a small bit of language you'd like to see added to it, so we would have to request for an amendment if we could, but Alder, I'm sorry, Corporation Council, if you could please move forward with your language.
I apologize, the word conceptual should have been added to this. Approve conceptual temporary use. The reason I say that is, the Greentown-Waukegan Committee, which includes people like Russ Tomlin, Tom Hagerty, Ryan Laubek, city officials, and some gardening and urban agriculture experts from the community, only has the power to come before this council and make suggestions, recommendations. We obviously will not spend one nickel of city money without the approval of this council. So all, all the Greentown-Waukegan Committee does is bring to the council plans, possibilities. Right now, what we'd like to do, we've begun to think through what might be done with this lot, whether it's native plants, where some locally grown food, a mixed use. We're looking at schools doing some seedlings for us. We're looking at a variety of things. We're not ready to bring a plan to this council yet, is exactly how this would go. We are also looking to fund this thing virtually entirely through volunteers and organizations so the city and its financial posture is not going to have to expend dollars on this, certainly beyond maybe some very basic minimal things that we might ask of you. But right now, all I, I would ask is that we have an amendment to add the word conceptual to item G, and then the Greentown-Waukegan Committee can go ahead and begin to put together a detailed plan to come back to the council with for your consideration.
The word conceptual would fit into, if you could just read the point you'd like to see that in.
Conceptually approve the temporary use of the city lot, would be the way I would ask, ask it to be. So that we, we don't have any approval of actual action, but an approval for us to bring to you a plan.
Okay. I'll take a motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Moiseo to...
First amend.
To, to amend item G to add the word conceptually.
Right.
I think we can just do a voice poll down there. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Now, we will vote on, I, I'm sorry, Alderman, just one moment, if I could, I'll restate item G.
No, you, you, Your Honor, you need to, on the amendment, it shouldn't be southwest corner. You should put an address of 111, 113. Southwest corner of Belvedere is not that, is not 111 Belvedere.
I'm sorry, I don't have that on my agenda.
I know you don't. It says on the southwest corner, southwest corner of Sheridan Road in Belvedere.
Right.
South Genesee. It is a Sheridan, South Genesee swings out ahead of time, and Sheridan, I believe it is, we're talking about the Beatty Parcel, the old...
I know, but that's not the southwest corner.
That's where it's at, it's the southwest corner.
That's southeast corner.
It goes all the way to Genesee, so it'd be the southeast corner of Genesee, but it's a southwest corner of Sheridan Road.
Okay.
111.
Can we live with that described on the...
111, yeah.
Okay. So we have the amend, as amended, we need to approve as amended item G. Again, take the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Moisio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. We go to item 11, ordinances and resolutions. I believe this comes out of Judiciary Committee, Alderman Figueroa, is that correct?
Well, this was, this was held over for some time, and a copy is in your, was provided to your packets. This is a subdivision, this was approved some time ago, and it was a question that Alderman Tempest had for which it was held over, and that was to include sidewalks and curbs. And we've got that included now.
I don't see it in the, I don't see it. I read all of this.
You know what?
Is that it?
No, that's not it. President, this is...
Is Steve here?
No.
He is.
You're right, this is the final plan. We need an actual agreement.
Not there.
I haven't seen for that, so...
No.
No, it's...
Depending the fact that we don't have an actual agreement before us, then we will hold this over again. Now, I will say that we will do Alderman's time, and as I said before, we were going to executive session following, pardon? Be held over by Alderman Tempest. Just automatically. Okay, now we go to Alderman's time, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
It's Alderman time?
Yes.
I'll start right out with the subdivision if I can. Why, I read this very carefully, I read everything there. And in committee, we had our developer wanted to put this development in without curbs and gutters. I had concerns of that. I went out there, I know the property. He tried to put it through once years ago, and I went out and checked, I went out and checked. Again, the subdivisions to the south and west have curb and gutters. You know, I know it's rural, but you know, you ought to have city standards. And also I have questions on the map. If you looked at the map, I know this held over, I knew during Alderman time, the one road ain't going to be developed, they're going to put, and it's, we ought to know exactly what you gentlemen are voting on. You need to know exactly, and if you look at the map that he gave you in Cheyenne, it shows it's a half a street. Is that what we agreed for, a half a street? We vacated a parcel of land, I gave him two extra lots, I gave him a little more money to make the subdivision work. Okay, that's, so that's why we held it over, that needs to be ironed out. Boy, on the budget. I wasn't here for the last one, but I was taking care of my daughter with hip surgeries, why I missed our meetings, otherwise I don't miss. But I did watch it on TV last night, so I felt, I thought Tina did a good job on the TV explaining things, and I listened to the meeting on TV, so I got a good idea what took place. Tax increases, I'm getting a lot of phone calls on tax increases. People are concerned, but I wanted to bring a little history to date, Mayor. You know, they say the city hasn't done this and that. The city of Waukegan has kept a pretty level tax rate throughout the years, pretty level. And we got caught in economic downturn. The College of Lake County got a tax increase. The Fort Reserve got a tax increase. School District, back a few years ago, got a big tax increase. Go back to your back tax bills, about six years, you see what I'm talking about. They passed a reform, they pushed it. The Park District got a tremendous increase in their taxes they received from you. Go back seven, eight years and see what you're paying to the Park District. Waukegan has been pretty steady on what we've been paying out, pretty steady. We had a tax rate at one time about a dollar sixty cents for quite a few years, and then I told you Jim Edgar put a rule, you couldn't go over 5% without a special hearing, so the tax rate eventually went down, 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 and it leveled off. I have a graph, it just recently spiked up because we didn't abate the bonds. We're going to have to continue to find ways to make the city work with less money. That's one of the reasons I questioned the captains on the, on the fire department. I don't know if we need four captains. You got three guys there, and I got to have one to fill in when they're on vacation. Hell, two ought to be able to fill in vacation. I can make the schedule out for you if I had to. You know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to get together and wait, and I don't want to hurt anybody. When a guy retires, maybe that's a time to reduce one, you know? But we can't, we can't continue playing the same game we have before. And it's not one alderman's fault here, it's not the mayor's fault, it's the economic times that we're in. It really isn't. We're just going to have to work harder in ways that we get more work out of the employees we have. And I feel sorry for a lot of this. We have some employees that have not had a raise for, what, Sam, how many, three years? They have not had a raise? Not only that, they take a furlough day with no pay, and they're paying 10% of their insurance costs, which they've never paid before. So they have taken a pay cut. The alderman up here decided, yeah, we didn't, we didn't take a raise this year, and we voted for a four-year, the next four years, no increase. I mean, we all got to work together to try and, the community's got to maybe start thinking about, it's a dead squirrel out in front of your yard, for God's sake, don't call the animal warden to come pick it up, go out there with a shovel and pick it up and put it in a garbage can, you know? Start doing a little more for yourselves. We've got to all work together to make things go. And again, my vote on the CLC tonight, I was not voting against CLC, I was voting to get a better deal, and I think we could have got a little better deal. That's my nature. Okay, thank you very much, Your Honor.
Alderman Larson?
Thank you. Alderman Tempest alluded to the, in the last two weeks, a number of the taxing districts have published their levy increases. I have, in the Eighth Ward, it encompasses quite an area from east to west, and I have six school districts...
Wow.
That partially in the Eighth Ward.
Jeez.
From Warren High School, Gurnee Grade, to Spalding, to Zion, to Beach Park, to Waukegan, six school districts. Each one of them published a levy in the double digits, a levy increase. They probably won't, you know, get there, but the ones out on the west side, the Gurnee Schools, 13, 16% increases in their proposed levy. When you look at the tax bills carefully, this has gone on for years, again, we've talked about it till we're blue in the face, and people just don't get it. Your Waukegan portion of your tax bill has been 16, 17 cents out of every dollar for years. We've tried to maintain it on a level basis, as Alderman Tempest very correctly indicated. 70% of your tax bill typically, doesn't matter what school district you're in, goes towards the schools. We have no responsibility as this body to, you know, we don't have any responsibility in setting their tax rate. Park District, County, Township, they take up about the remaining 15%. So people are angry, they're frightened, they don't want to lose their homes, they're hanging on, they're not getting their social security increase. We totally understand that. We're all in the same boat economically, our families, many of us. But I want to mention again that the largest proportion of your tax bill is something that the city council has no control over, and that's, and that's been that way for decades, not just a few years. On a brighter note, I want to once again thank all the many volunteers for Waukegan Main Street and the city of Waukegan, and just people who pitched in to help make the holiday fest the success it was. We had a white event, which was nice, a little slushy at times, we took care of that, too. I think there was something in the neighborhood of 170 smores that were, that were eaten by the kids. So thanks to the volunteers who stood over that fire and helped the kids make a wonderful healthy treat. It was great to see. And it's not too early to mark on your calendars the date March 5th. Waukegan Main Street hosts, or is going to have a heck of a party again this year, the Mardi Gras Party, March 5th. So put it on your calendars, get your reservations and your feathered boas ready, because it's going to be another good party. Thank you very much.
Alderman Rivera?
Thank you. I too have been getting a lot of calls. As you know, in my district, you know, I have, what, three townships, Libertyville, Waukegan, Warren Township, and again, I mean, they're taxed to death. And I know you've mentioned, Alderman Larson, and also Alderman Tempest, mentioned that how we have kept our, our portions at a certain level for many years. Well, guess what? That hurt us. That hurt us bad. Instead of doing it gradually, little by little, now we're asking the taxpayers to see if we can close this gap all in one, with one swipe. And to me, that's, that's not right. Yeah, it's nice to stand up here and say, yeah, we kept the taxes down for many years, but I think that in the long run has hurt us. So I have, like I said, it's very, I'm encouraging everyone to be here on the 14th, Tax Talk. And I hope everyone comes to that, because it's very important that they're, they come to this so they can really hear, first of all, for us aldermen to listen, to hear what they have to say, but at the same time, to get an education on what's going on as well. And I believe there's going to be other people here from the county tax assessor's office to explain some of the programs that may be out there. So there's going to be some good things as well, but I encourage everyone to be here for that on the 14th. And not only that, I believe we have our council meeting on the 20th. We also have a truth and taxation hearing before that, before our council meeting, so it's important that you're here for that. But once again, again, I mean, these are big decisions that we have to make. That's why the people elected us to be here to do these things, but, but at the same time, we want people to understand that we care as well. I'm a taxpayer. Right now, I'm talking to you as a taxpayer as well, because I'm very concerned, because we have a lot of families, the senior citizens, you know, they're on certain income. You know, to ask them now to possibly play, pay double digits in their property taxes in this time, that's insane. It's going to be, it's tough, but I wanted to make sure that they're here, to voice their opinion, and to listen what's out there in terms of programs. Again, I want to thank Tom. Public Works did a great job with the, our first snow removal, very good job. Roads are nice, like always, so I appreciate that very much. Also, I too went to the holiday events downtown, and I enjoyed it, stopped in some of the businesses, and I congratulate the Waukegan Main Street for doing a wonderful job, like they always do. Thank you very much.
Alderman Cunningham?
Thank you. Your Honor, two things I have. One, on tonight's meeting, on item G, I understand there is, we're trying to create a greener environment, but in the future, I'm expecting for the aldermen of the wards to be informed about this prior to council meeting. And this is the first time I heard about it, but never knew this was going to be on the agenda, and as this committee that you're, that has been put together by city officials, it would have been nice for particularly this alderman to be informed that this was going in his ward. So that's what, that would have been nice, but don't want to take away from the positive side of it, but there are some things that I think we should be a little bit more informed of when it comes to things that are going on in our wards, because on, from a frontline standpoint, when people ask questions, they don't call other, they call the alderman or particularly the mayor's office. So that's just, you know, food for thought for the future. Second, don't know if many people have received this type of notice, but this notice went out to a couple of my, the residents in my ward, and it says, "A notice to Lake County residents, in recent review of your services, your service area, we were, we have noticed that your property does not have water service line coverage from home service. You are responsible for the maintenance and repair of exterior water lines at the above address. Repair, repairing a broken line could cost you thousands of dollars without coverage." This is going out to residents in the city of Waukegan. And this appears that it's coming to, this is coming from the city of Waukegan. After talking to Jeff Mazinski, first of all, I got a call from two or three, and it seems like they're targeting our seniors, and it seems like it's targeting our seniors. So what I, I'm hoping to do, Dan, I'm going to give you a copy of this, and if you can probably send, get a notice out regarding this, but I did talk with Jeff. Jeff said he's heard about it, but not, that not to, it was nothing coming from us, it has nothing to do, but the, the way this notice reads, it reads like it's something that to do with the city of Waukegan. Tom, I'll get you a copy so you have for your file, but...
Sam, will you get me a copy, too?
Yeah.
Because I have not seen this, the first I've heard of this, too.
Yeah, and I've heard it going in, I know in the First Ward, I think the Fifth Ward, now Moisio, so we want to be extremely careful with this, and I even had one resident who was about to send it in, thinking that it's something they had to pay from the city. And let me just say what it's costing them. It's costing them, I think 13, 14, here it is, $4.99 per month, $14.97 per month, per quarter, or $59.98 per year. You know, bottom line is, I ain't going to say the word scam, but I guess I did say it, didn't I? So we just want to be extremely careful to let our residents know this is not something from the city of Waukegan. You know, we want to be very careful about this, and I don't even know how to, how to position it, but we, I want to make sure it got out today. Please, please be careful, and if not, at least they called their alderman, I'm happy about that. If you have any, any questions, just free, free to call City Hall, but this is not coming from the city, correct, Tom?
No.
No, not coming from the city of Waukegan at all. Last but not least, obviously, the first snowstorm, we got spoiled in November, I just, I will admit it, because I know I did. When you have 40 to 50-degree weather in November up in, near the lake, then you should be happy, but December 1st came in with a bang, didn't it? And with that being said, the first snowfall, I think the residents did a pretty good job. What I will ask, though, is our patrol division from the police department, there are some, it seemed like there's some cars who have not been moved yet. I think the best time to, you know, to send a note for, you know, all of December, January and February, is start putting some tickets on them cars that still have snow on it, that hasn't been moved in X amount of time, and I'm going to ask, this might be directed to Tom. Tom, will this help? It was a suggestion from one of the residents. I know on some of our one-way streets, they park on one side and they just forget to move their cars. Would it be possible, if we can have them, is it alternate park during snow times, so you can just knock it out one time and knock it out another time? Is that something you, you would like to happen, or you'd be thinking about?
I think I understand what you're saying, and we very welcome help and assistance from the UMA, it's got us all a problem.
Okay, it was a suggestion from one of the residents, and I wanted to throw it out there. It sounds good to me. I just want to get it up, because I know, it's, you know, for the life of me, why would you just let a car sit there? It just, it always happens. But Chicago does it well, don't they? They tell them you're going to get towed. They, what is it, an ordinance that starts on a certain time of the year and ends on a certain time of the year? They just tow your car, don't they? December 1st. We don't want to do that, because that's a very sensitive subject to us in Waukegan now. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Concan?
Thank you. I'd just like to echo the thoughts of Alderman Larson, Alderman Rivera about the taxes. This is something that's obviously very important to everybody here in the city. I've gotten a number of calls from people that, on fixed incomes, and very concerned about whether or not they'd be able to make the tax rate, and... about whether or not they'd be able to make the tax rate. And just want to emphasize exactly what Alderman Larson said, there's a lot of things on your tax bill that we do not control. That's something that I think everybody should do, and if we come in and, like Alderman Rivera said, to come in here to that tax talk and find out and actually look at your bill and actually determine where your money's going. And any increase that this council votes on is not on your entire tax bill, just one portion of it. As for City Yards along with Alderman Cunningham, yeah, we had a heck of a November, I think we had a heck of a December so far too, because if it had snowed anymore and you'd have plowed in any more driveways, I don't think yet the people would be as happy as they are anyways. But Tom, I think your City Yards group did an excellent job. And the only other comment I got is, with the upcoming Christmas and New Years, with a little snow on the ground, I'd please everybody just be careful out there, we don't want to see any buddy, kids walking to school that through sidewalks that might not be shoveled, areas around the school, especially kids might be walking in the street, that's something that, especially with the snow on the ground, take particular care when driving. Let's just be safe for the rest of the year and especially through the Christmas, New Year, holiday season. That's all, thank you.
Alderman Moseo?
Yeah. Taxes, taxes, taxes. Obviously, if you've paid attention, it's not just a subject in Waukegan, but it's a subject all over the country. People are tired of being taxed. But then it becomes, we don't tax, we can't offer the same services. You can only ask your employees to work so hard for the amount of money before they say, I'm just, you know, I'm not gonna do it. I only do so much, they won't do the little extra things. Have we gotten ourselves in this problem? Maybe a little bit. But we're only an ancillary government of the state. Part of that rests on the state. Part of our problem is our pensions. And it's not fair to guys who have retired, who gave their life to Waukegan, and especially police and firemen, policemen, who every decision they make is a potential lawsuit to, to change in the middle of the stream for them either. The system is flawed. It's flawed from the beginning, is we have to make a pension payment to the pension, the police pension and the fire pension. They say, here's the bill, here's what you have to pay, whether they lost money on investments or not. The taxpayers of Waukegan have to pick that up. It's not a statewide system. That's not fair to the retirees, it's not fair to the taxpayers, it's not fair to anybody up here. It's a flawed system. It needs to be fixed, and it needs to be fixed now. But nobody up here can fix that. Only people in Springfield can fix that. In some conversations with Tina, she brought up an interesting point. You know, the federal government, GM was, GM folded, ING, the insurance company folded, the banks got in trouble. The federal government said, we can't let these people fail. Meanwhile, you have all these municipalities and these states that are failing. My solution is here. State of Illinois, there's the tick, the, the tick, the keys, the City Hall, you can have it. It's yours, state, come in and take it over, you can have it. What do you think they're gonna do? Oh, no, no, that's okay, that's okay, we don't want that. But then you make the rules that we gotta play by. How can you let us play by these rules when we, we can't do anything about it? We can't play by these rules. You cannot keep going back to the taxpayer, asking them to make up shortfalls that were bad investments. You can't do it. Just like that quote that I read at the last council meeting, a, a government monopoly is the worst type. It only serves itself. It only serves itself. We need reform at the state and federal government level to help us out. We can stay limping along and keep going back to the taxpayer, but the taxpayers I've talked to and the taxpayers that have called me, they said, I've had enough, quit taxing me. And at the end of the day, and I understand what Alderman Larson has said and what Sam has said, we don't really get in seventeen percent, look at your tax bill, there's about ten taxing bodies on it. They don't want to hear that. They don't understand that. We can have a tax talk and some of them will understand, but at the end of the day, they're still getting taxed more. I just wrote a $900 check to my mortgage company because the escrow was short. I don't want to have to do that again. I don't have $900 to write them again. Alderman Tempest brings up a good point, we gotta start doing more for ourselves. That's part of the reason we're in this problem, is we have so many irresponsible people that the responsible people have to try to take care of. What do you do? It can't just be fixed up here. But part of my, part of me says is, we need to push at Springfield and push to Washington where they can make real change. We can only change so much up here, we can only change the rules so much. We can only ask our employees to work so hard for the same amount of money before they say, hey, I'm finished with that. We need to push back to higher government to help us fix some of our problems. Some of our problems are our own, some of their problems, we need to help them, or we need to push at them so they can help us, or we'll fall apart. What if every municipality in the state of Illinois did that? You'd get some real reform, you'd get some real change from Springfield and from Washington if all the municipalities did. I watched a pension reform thing, Mayor, you told me we're part of that, trying to get this reform, because it's gonna, it's gonna bankrupt us. And that's not fair, again, to the retirees, it's not fair to the taxpayer, it's not fair to us. It needs to be fixed and it needs to be fixed now. We need to push harder. And if it comes to it, I'll give them the keys, they can have it. Thank you.
Alderman Figueroa?
Thank you. I want to make an announcement that Judiciary Meeting, that's two weeks, that's right before the, the City Council Meeting, have an item coming out of Development Commission, that's very important, and wait for it to come out. We'll have a quick Judiciary Committee Meeting on the 20th for 15 minutes, and it has to do with the rewrite of one of the, one of our zoning codes, see how it goes, but it has to do with a piece of property so that we can get. Pardon me? Truth in Taxation, two weeks? Yeah, it's, I'll, I'll address with each of the aldermen, once it comes out of Development Commission, so that everybody, but Judiciary, once everybody's read it, it's a simple, but it has to be done. Five forty-five? Five forty-five? Wait a minute, five forty-five? Okay. Well, the Truth in Taxation, will it be a full council?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock or six thirty?
Six thirty.
Tina?
Six.
Six. Six o'clock's different.
Six o'clock.
Oh, is a hearing at six, six o'clock?
Five forty-five would give you time.
Okay, Judiciary at five forty-five then.
Make it five thirty, tell them to give yourself a little breathing room.
That's Judiciary on, in two weeks.
Five thirty?
Five thirty.
Okay, I'll put it on.
But I was gonna do the homework, first of all, to make sure everybody, I've talked to everybody. Okay, five thirty it is then. And I just wanted to commend the mayor on, on this program for manufacturing industrial group getting together. And it's a subject that's very near and dear to my heart. Having spent thirty, thirty-plus years working in industry and seeing so many jobs being shipped overseas, and, and hearing stories similar to what the mayor brought up about the machinist skills that are going unfilled. For so many years, working with the Workforce Investment Board, and I'm still on that, on that, and, and hearing similar stories about so many jobs going unfilled, because we do not have the people properly trained to fill the jobs. And one of the coming crises, upcoming crises, and I hate to harp on this, is we have so many people, baby boomers that are retiring, and there's nobody to step into their, into their shoes. And we talk about so many jobs that have shipped overseas, but we're not talking about the jobs that are here right now, the high-tech jobs. And it's not gonna take just the school district, CLC, it's gonna take the community to get, after young people, to go ahead and fill those jobs. So I commend you, I think that it's, it's, it's really needed, but I think it's gonna take a community effort, but this commission, I certainly hope that, and, and have the, the, the hope that, if you will, that this is going to be able to take root and certainly light a fire under the, under the schools. We can't just lay it at the doorsteps of the schools. We gotta help them, have kids that are ready to, to, to step into these jobs. So it's, there's a lot there, and I commend the, the mayor for this commission, and I look forward, if, if, if he chooses, I'd, I'd like to be on, on that commission. I think that there's a lot of insight, having worked with industry. As, as simple as being able to fill, to, excuse me, to read a manufacturing instruction and follow it to the letter, you'd be surprised how many people can't do that. Read an instruction and follow it step by step. Okay, enough said, so.
Alderman Newsom? Okay? Yep?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. One thing I do want to offer very quickly before I take the motion to go into executive session is that the state did pass a form of pension reform. We have downloaded that bill and are kind of working our way through it, but it's not gonna solve our current problem. There's the, the, what we need is not in there, particularly in the shortfall with the pension funds as they are right now. If those had occurred after a date next year, we'd be all set, because you'd have four or five years to amateurize that and to backfill it, but it's not set up like that now. Maybe, maybe the voices will be heard down in Springfield and maybe we'll get some amendments to it. Yes, Alderman?
We need a bailout.
Well, we need a bailout. I think we're gonna have to generate, we're gonna have to generate our own bailout, so it's, but it's something that, as we analyze this and if we find there's any, any silver among the dark clouds, we'll, we'll let you know. But anyway, we'll take a motion to go into executive session for settlement of claims and pending litigation by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We'll take a five-minute recess before we go into executive session. One, two, three, four, and five. Motion to come back into regular session by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Conken, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman Moseo, seconded by Alderman Larson, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you.